This message has been brought to you freely by Ecclesia Kingdom Movement. To support our ministry and partner with us to increase our impact across the world, reach more people and take advantage of more platforms, we encourage you to consider making a monthly gift of any amount or one-time gift towards the work of the gospel. We'd like to thank you in advance for your support and we value your partnership.
Romans, chapter 1. Where did we stop last week? Okey dokey, so let's go back to... Shundobakosa. Okay, from verse 14. Now, I don't... how many translations have we gone to tonight? Anyone's got King James? Anyone's got New King James? Anyone's got New Living Translation? Anyone's got... what version have you got, love? New King James? Okay, it doesn't matter what translation you're reading from, right? I want you to read it out loud. Don't worry about the person sitting next to you. But if the person is standing next to you, trying to betterize you, just with wisdom, just do this. Amen. You'll catch it in a bit. You'll catch it. You'll catch it. All right. Don't stop yet. I'll tell him when to stop, please. Don't stop yet. Don't stop yet. Don't stop yet. Just like drinking water in thingy. Okay, you can just play just pianos. Just piano. Just piano. Just piano. I like atmosphere. "I am adept to both to the Greek and to the barbarians." Okay, you're gonna read from verse 14 to 18. Yep, all right. One, two, go. As loud as you can. Amen. Amanda, you made it. You made it. Heavenly Father, tonight we pray that you will breathe upon your word. I pray, God, let every heart be prepared to receive. For as we discourse, as we share, as we revelate, as we make it plain, God, I pray for wisdom. Let the revelation of your Spirit come. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. You can be seated. All right, so today I'm gonna be continuing from the same scripture, but I'm gonna take a slightly different approach. Is that okay? So I know last week we taught from one verse, we shared and we discussed, but still in that same light, I'm gonna... Think of me as the moderator. Is that okay? Thank you, Esther. Is that okay? There we go. All right. The introduction that's given to this scripture is interesting. We covered all that last week, so I'm not gonna... Like I said, I learnt a new phrase. I'm not gonna say I'm not gonna be here long. I'm gonna say, I'm gonna use safe sentence. "I don't plan to be here long." So if I stay here long, forgive me in advance. But I promise I don't plan to be here long. We will discourse and we will share. You will ask questions. And we will talk. "This love that he has given to us was never in doubt." Okay. It says, "For I am adept to both to the Greek and to the barbarians, both to the wise and to the unwise." If you remember from last week, we began to speak about the introduction that Paul gave to this scripture about how... I don't know if we covered it last week, but how, you know, Paul, when he wrote this letter, I think, I don't think he was physically in Rome, but he had tried to come to Rome, but apparently there were people who tried to kill him in Rome. So he had to go through thingy. He had to take a back route. But he wrote this letter not in Rome, but from a different city. I can't remember the city now off the top of my head. So Paul begins to write, and then chapter 14 says, "I will not have you ignorant that oftentimes I propose to comment to you..." Yeah, that's what I just explained. "...that I may have some proof among you, even as among other Gentiles." So this scripture here, just that verse alone suggests that the Roman, the Romans were Gentiles. "Just as among other Gentiles." Says, "I am adept to both to the Greek and to the barbarians, both to the wise and to the unwise." Now, remember, Paul establishes his apostasy in the previous chapter. And then by reading of that apostasy and on mention, in quote, ordination, he becomes a father of the faith, right? And then he established himself as one. And he begins to, he begins on his missionary journeys, begins to teach and travel around about. But at one point, he felt the need to write to the Romans. And of all the things he wrote, I don't know if we're studying the entire book of Romans, so I'm gonna stick strictly to chapter 1. Is that okay? So Paul begins to speak and he says, "I am adept to blah blah blah, both to the wise and to the unwise. So much as in me I am ready to preach the gospel to you, that in Rome also..." Okay, this is the gospel that I'm about to preach to you. But before I say that, let me announce my confidence in the gospel. He says, "For I am not ashamed of the gospel of Christ." And then we see something. He says, "For it is the power of God unto salvation." So if you read that, Chris is not here to help me read it the way I like it. When you see this scripture, you see that Paul begins to emphasize that the power of God unto salvation, right? The power of God unto salvation is found where? In the gospel. I'm not preaching, I'm teaching, so... Oh, sorry, I'm attempting to teach. How am I doing so far? I was speaking to someone this afternoon, I said, you know what? The person made the mistake of asking me his question scripturally. And then by the time I was done typing, I discovered I typed an entire note. So I said, "Sorry, I get too excited." So if I get too excited, just, you know, bring me back. Amen. This feeling is like, it's like, if I've a sense, it's just... Yeah, calm down. Okay, so Paul begins to say that the power of God is found, or it's wrapped, or encapsulated in what? In the gospel of Christ. Now, last week, let's share a recap. How many of us remember, we talked about the gospel last week, didn't we? Didn't we? Did we talk about the gospel last week? Students of Ecclesia, did we talk about the gospel last week? Yes, we did. Amanda, were you here last week? What did we say about the gospel? Remind me what we said about the gospel. Yes, you. Interesting. Should we do a recap? Esther, do you wanna say it out loud? Look at them scrolling through their notes. This is evidence. No one read their note last week. Bishops, it seems like we have extra work to do. Come on, come on, come on. All my days, everyone is on their note. Bishops, look around. Okay, Auntie Effie, what did we describe the gospel as? Good tidings, show off. Show off. Show off. All right, we did describe the gospel as glad tidings, but what was the glad tidings? What was the good news? Now, this is my, this is my, this is my issue with teaching, because now I feel the need to re-explain what the gospel is. And because of that, I may not have time to speak on what I wanna speak about today and then give you time to ask questions. So, for the sake of time, the gospel is glad tidings. If you wanna find out what that is, everything that Jesus accomplished on the cross, not just on the cross, but on his way to the cross. Amen. Everything he accomplished, both on the cross and through his life, is the gospel. Amen? Amen. So just prove it at the back of your mind. So Paul begins to write and he says, "In the life of Jesus and in the things that he manifested, the life that he lived here on earth, in it we find good news. And in that life is wrapped the power of God." And so the power of God that causes salvation is wrapped up in the gospel. Are you with me so far? You guys are gonna say yes. Should I be mean today? Because every time from the altar you say, "Are you with me?", everyone goes, "Yes." What did I just say, Amanda? Listen, whether we like it or not, we will receive this word. Amen. No more talking over your heads. Like, "Mm, deep now." We will receive, amen, we will receive this word. The gospel... The gospel... Is described, you know what, okay. Since you're all on your phones, Blue Letter Bible. Let's do this. There's no projector today. Okay, we'll make do. Yes, yes, sunny. Preach it. Okay, the gospel, anyone on Blue Letter Bible? Quickly, quickly. There? Go on, read it out. Hold on, hold on. Read that second one, that second definition again. Is that word compromise? Are you sure it's compromise? Do you wanna just, if it's touchscreen, you can just do this. Comprise, right? Yeah, that sounds more correct. Go on. To procure what? Okay, perfect. The fifth definition says, "The messianic rank of Jesus was proved by his works, his deeds, and his death, his death, the narratives of the saints' deed and death of Jesus Christ." This is the definition that I'm gonna stay with. So basically, remember I said that the gospel comprises of everything that Jesus accomplished here on earth. Should I say that again? The gospel comprises of... oh, I'm gonna talk slowly. Okay. The gospel comprises of everything that Jesus accomplished here on earth. Yeah, so the gospel comprises of everything that Jesus did here on earth. Are you with me? Glenn, do you catch it? You get it? Okay. So the gospel, Jane, what is the gospel? Say it out loud. Come on, don't be shy. There's wireless.
Everything that God... I don't like the microphone. Everything that God accomplished on here.
Glenn, what did I just say? Not the Bible? So, now, this is the gospel, right? So now, Paul goes on to... Paul goes on to... Begin to expose that the power that we find or we have in salvation is unraveled when we begin to grasp what the gospel is. Are you with me? So the gospel itself, the tidings, the glad tidings, they are not just tales, but they are lives, or they are, they are the life that was manifested or demonstrated, that the life that Jesus mirrored while he was here on earth. That's why he said, "When I am gone, greater than what I have accomplished, you will accomplish." The songwriter said, "He came from heaven to..." "To..." "To..." "Who?" "The what?" You guys are amazing singers, aren't you? I thought I was bad with lyrics, but I feel a bit better now. All right, so let's carry on reading. Let's carry on reading. Where was I? Chapter, verse? Fi... Where was I? What verse am I on? Yeah, it says, "For I am not ashamed of the gospel of Christ." Pause for a second. Natalia, why would you be ashamed of the gospel of Christ? Bishops gives you guys opportunity to speak. I just call names.
Why would one be ashamed of the gospel?
Because they don't know it.
Any other person wanna attempt? Now you raise your hands, I'll call your name. Smart girl.
Because they don't actually believe it.
Okay, beautiful. One more answer. Okay, go on.
Because they don't know the power therein.
Perfect. That's a, that's a deep answer. Okay.
Because they're afraid of persecution.
Perfect, that's... Within the context of this scripture, that would be the perfect answer. Do you get it? See? I discovered something in scripture. This is, this is what Habakkuk 2 says. It says, "Write the vision." What's the next line? Have you ever paused for a second to think about that? Write the vision, make it plain. Sometimes the most powerful truth are found in the simplicity of the word. So sometimes it's just there in your face. So Natalia, you say, "Because..."
They don't know it.
I don't know it. You say, "Because..."
They don't actually believe it.
I said, "They know not the power therein."
They know not the power therein. That is, because it's... Now, Paul goes on to say, "I am not ashamed for this reason, because it is the power of God unto salvation." Because in the, bless you. It's in the power of God that is found in the gospel that brings about salvation. Now, the question comes, what is salvation? This one, I'm gonna go to the... Be healed. Be healed. Be healed. Be healed. Amen. I wanted to give faster sound. Faster sound. Faster sound. Salvation. Two seconds, sir. Tell us about salvation. Bless you.
Salvation is simply the, is the power of God that brings us to the knowledge of Jesus Christ himself.
Beautiful.
Personal.
Beautiful, 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 beautiful. Come on, say it again, sir. No, say it again, sir. Please, say it again, sir.
It's the power of God.
One second. Everybody, I want us to repeat exactly what he says. Go on, sir.
It's the power of God that helps us to understand who Jesus is.
Beautiful. I could not have used a better word. It is the power of God that helps us to understand... The projector, that's something, that's a good shame to write up there.
That brings us to the knowledge.
You need salvation. It is the power of God that helps us to understand who Jesus is. Now, why is it so important to understand who he is? Now, Paul begins to say, "I am not ashamed of the gospel of God." Why? Because it is the power of God unto salvation. Now, he says, "It is the power of God that gives us power to understand who this Jesus is." What is special about this gospel? Read further. I'm gonna, I'm gonna come for more people. Those of you who hasn't answered questions. Oh, Amina, you're not gonna miss it today. I just saw you look away. I just saw you look away. You're not gonna miss it. You're not gonna miss it. You're not gonna miss it. It says, okay, now, it says, "unto everyone that believes." I'm gonna throw this to the house. Anyone wanna, anyone wanna comment on that? Anybody wanna comment on that? It is the power of God. Auntie Effie learnt the thingy. She doesn't look away. She looks at me. She doesn't look away. So, because she doesn't look away, I am tempted not to give her the mic, but I'll do it and I'll remember to give it to you again. Auntie Effie, Auntie Effie, what, do you have anything to say? It is the power of God. It is the power of God unto salvation to everyone that believes. Do you wanna say something about that?
I think we can relate it to John 3:16. That says, "For God..."
So love the word.
"...so love that he gave, so that whosoever believes should not perish, but have everlasting life. That everlasting life is the salvation. So those that believe will be those that believe in what Jesus accomplished on the cross."
Okay. Okay, beautiful. Beautiful, says, "to everyone that believes." Is there something, what, now, now, you see, you see that, like she said. Now, I think it's John 3, verse either 17 or so. It says, "For God sent not his son into the world to condemn the world, but that the world through him may be saved." And verse 18 says, this, I think, either 18 or 19 says, "This is the condemnation, that light was coming into the world, and men loved darkness rather than light, because their deeds were evil." The point there is, Paul makes a distinction and says, "The power of God that is found in salvation must be activated first only, or is available only to who?" So those who do not believe cannot experience the power. So therein, Paul unlocks a mystery there. He begins to explain and expose our eyes to the fact that the power that is found in the gospel of Christ can never be experienced by unbelievers. Remember, anyone wanna remind me how the children of Israel perish in the wilderness? What was their crime? Unbelief. They murmured, murmuring. And the thing about belief and disbelief is that when you believe, you act. When you do not believe, you act as well. Does that make sense? So now, Paul says, "It is the power of God unto salvation to them that believes." So for you to experience the power of God, you must first what? Now, how can you believe something you do not know? Read your Bible, pray every day, pray every day, pray every day. Read your Bible, pray every day. It's as simple as that. But what you, but we don't realize many times that the truth of the scripture, you can take one verse and live your entire life based on it. When you take great men and ask them, "Oh, what philosophy do you live your life by?" They will give you one line. I have one, and it's just one. Then ask them what it is. It's just one. It's just one. And everything about my life... Should I ask you guys what your, what your philosophy is? I could, I can tell you mine if you tell me yours. Amen. Are we learning something so far? Okay, go to Glenn. Give us a quick recap of everything we just said.
Everything.
Everything. Quick recap. Give us a quick recap of what you've got from what we've said.
Okay, I've learned what salvation really means.
What is salvation?
The power of God that helps us to understand who God really is.
Perfect. Go on.
The gospel.
Okay, what is the gospel?
God's like, I don't know. God's life.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah.
Good, good. Okay, okay, I'll lay you off. Anne, give us a quick recap of what you've heard. Know what you think I expect you to say, but what you've heard.
The gospel's comparison...
Comprises.
Of everything. Can't remember now.
You're on the right track. The gospel comprises of...
Everything.
That... Who lived?
Who lived? Christ.
There you go. There you go. Don't be shy about it. Be confident. If we have to go back, we will go back. Go on. So the gospel comprises of everything that who, who lived?
Who lives in Christ.
Ah, who, that Christ lived.
Christ lived.
Jesus here on earth. And so he came, remember, every time you think about it, he came from heaven to earth to show you and I the way, right? Cool. All right. You guys still love me, don't you? You still love me, right? You still love me. I hope you don't, you don't, you don't, it doesn't change by the end of this teaching. Okay, so where were we? Where were we? Where were we? Where were we? "unto all those who believe." Now, what does it say for those who do not believe? There you go. Give the mic to Amina. Says, "It is the power of God to salvation to all those who believe." What happens to those who do not believe?
They do not experience the power of God.
Simple. Simple. We shut ourselves out from experiencing the power of God when we do not believe.
Aren't there times where God will move anyway and will show you your power anyway, just to show you your path, just to show you who he is without you necessarily believing? For example, when, when Saul experienced God, he didn't necessarily believe everything. He was persecuting the church in the first place. So he encountered God, but he didn't believe. So aren't there times where God will, you know, maybe at least 20%? I don't know what the percentage is, but, do you know what I mean? When God will show you his power just because he wants to reveal yourself to him in that way.
Okay, he wants to reveal himself to you. Okay. Let me bring that, let me bring that in context. First things first, Paul was a man who was... I don't wanna go ahead of myself now, because that's covered in the rest of this verse. But Paul was a man who had a revelation, but an incorrect revelation of God. Because Paul was zealous for the work of God, but his zeal was not according to knowledge. So he persecuted the church, and God saw his heart. And God said, and God chose to, we went somewhere, and this is beautiful, this is just beautiful. Wait for it. Wait for it. Okay. So we went somewhere and we were listening to someone teach, J. Thomas. Thomas. J. Thomas. He was teaching. And he said, he said, "Paul's journey to Damascus..." Auntie Effie, you remember, right? Don't say it out yet. Okay. Paul's journey to Damascus wasn't just for his salvation, but, catch this. It says, "But Paul's journey to Damascus was to de-max us." De-mask us. Yes. I was like, whoa, okay, he said that again. God gave him a book. I'm like, whoa. So what happened was, he had on a lens that wasn't the correct, that portrayed a wrong revelation of Christ. So when he came into the revelation of light, because God showed himself, yeah, what? Light. He was blind for a while. And so God had to take away his sin. You know scriptures, sometimes we can say it's unnecessarily deep, but if you look at it, if you look in between the lines, Paul was seeing Christ from a different perspective. And so God had to attack his eyes. And so God caused his light to shine, and Paul was blind. Do you realize that it was just Paul who saw the light? Every other person fell to the floor. Or was it just him? Was it just him who saw the light? Did they hear the voice? But anyways, but the point from there is that the revelation that came from that encounter was just to Paul, not his companion. Ask yourself this question, what happened to the companion? Because they were going with him to go heal Christians. After Paul got from there, what did they do? God, the Bible says, "The goodness of God leads us to repentance." God shows himself, not so that, not because he's sovereign. Let's just get that clear. God is sovereign. So when God reveals himself, scripture says, "His goodness leads to repentance." But if it does the contrary... We'll see what happens to them later. Does that make sense? That, he won't what?
He won't show his power unless he believes.
No, 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 no. No, once he's spoken twice, we've heard. Cool? So basically, God will, to everyone, now, it's, belief is a response to God. So he will show you his faithfulness, but it's your responsibility to respond, whether by faith or not. Does that make sense? So your belief is a response. Remember we said, "When you believe, you react." When you disbelieve, you react as well. So when God shows you his goodness... Take the mic to Bishop. Okay, when God shows you his goodness, your response. Does that make sense? So you have the responsibility of responding either in faith or disbelief. And whatever happens from there, we'll find out later, because that's where I'm going to. Bishops.
I think what Amanda was asking is, is it possible for an unbeliever to see God's power, right? Or someone who doesn't believe? Is that your question? And I agree with Amanda, yes, because before we discover God's power... um before we discover God's power, before some people are saved, their eyes are closed. Paul's eyes was closed. And that's why he said, when Jesus said to him, why are you kicking against the pricks? Why is he kicking against God? And he says, who are you, Lord? So he didn't believe, he was, he was going to church like some people do, he was jumping up in worship. And he was at biblical meditations and studies, but he hadn't encountered, he hadn't seen God. And I pray that will be nobody here, you will meet God, amen?
Amen, amen.
So what Amanda's saying is it, just because someone doesn't believe, they, can they not experience God's power? And I say that, I say that it is possible to not believe but experience his power, it's what your response is, and that's what Pastor Paul's trying to say. Your response to God's power, your response to salvation demonstrates, shows whether you believe. So yes, Amanda, someone may not believe and God can show up to them, but their response often determines whether they have salvation, whether they believe. Does that?
So what? Salvation. Okay, let me, okay, um, what's her name, um, tell us then. Okay, I'll say that, what she's saying is belief, so belief is what unlocks?
Yeah, because obviously, it's the, it's the power showing.
No, no, go on, go on, give her the mic, so we can hear the question. Give her the mic, so we can hear the question.
So if you're saying it's the response, right? You respond differently, so when Paul responded, he received, he believed, so therefore he received the power, right? So therefore believing is the key that unlocks the power. Unlocks the, the power is there, but the power will be there, right? So when you believe, you unlock it for you to experience it. I understand, yeah.
So otherwise it will be an encounter.
We had.
Does that make sense?
Auntie Effie and then Amina.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, in a way, it's something to what you're trying to say. Um, I would say it depends on how we perceive the word power. Because um there are a lot of people that have seen the power of God, but they have not believed. And they have not surrendered, which is the right response for them to access the salvation. I'll give an example of Judas Iscariot. Judas walked with Jesus. Um, I don't know whether he was with Jesus the full three years or whatever. And he betrayed Jesus. He saw the power of God, he realised he'd betrayed an innocent man. But then he didn't surrender to receive that salvation. He ended up committing suicide. He remained in sin. It's the believing, but then the submission after believing, I would say.
Okay, Amina?
Um, I think that I'm kind of taking it out of context. Um, I'm just gonna read the chapter again, chapter sixteen, it says, for I am not ashamed of the gospel of Christ, for it is the power of God unto salvation to everyone that believes, to the Jew first and also to the Greek. It is um possible to experience the power of God, but you cannot preach the gospel with the power of God um without first believing in it. Does that make sense?
It does, because of the context of the.
It, I'm just saying because of the context of what the scripture is saying. Because Amanda was saying that, um how comes Paul experienced the power of God? Everyone experiences the power of God every day. The fact that we're liv, we're breathing and the fact that we're allow, alive now is the power of God. But for that, it's saying that for the gospel to have power, for you to preach the gospel and the power of God comes through it, you must first believe. So for um for Paul to preach the gospel, he weren't about doing stuff for God, right? But for him to, to preach it with power, he had to come to that encounter and then he had to believe. For him to preach with power. Yeah.
Does that make sense, Amanda? Okey dokey, um. Okay, um, any other person got something to say? Anyone's got any question, thing to ask, shoot now or forever, or for the rest of this session.
I didn't understand the de-masking part. Sorry, I tried to ask before, but everybody was talking about.
De-mask, de, remove, wait, remove the mask.
I got lost when you explained everything. So he was, it just, hmm.
What's your question, let her ask a question, let her ask, now answer it, let, let me get the question off. I'll give her the mic, let, let her ask the question.
I don't understand the de-masking.
Okay.
Wait, okay, maybe let me try to understand for myself first. So, so, so you were saying that, um, actually, no, you said that, um, his journey to Damascus was to de-mask us. So us, to, for us to not have a mask.
Do you get it? It's like the, the scales being taken off your eyes. Like the way Paul's scales taking off his eyes.
The scale will come off your eyes. He went through him, God began to de-mask us.
Us, yeah.
Sorry, um Esther, it's, um, it's a pun, so Damascus, de-mask us. Yeah, that's what, um.
It's a play on words.
Yeah, it was just a pun.
Lord Damascus.
Yeah, that's a good prayer, but Lord Damascus. Damascus!
I'm gonna pray.
Alright, okay, alright, moving on now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, um, because what's happening here, so this is what I'm going to do, um. I wanted to stop at verse seventeen. So this is what I'm going to do, I'm gonna establish the context. Does that make sense? Now we can ask our questions, so we know what we're talking about exactly, because I know where I'm going with this. Does that make sense? So I'm gonna talk for a bit, promise you not too long, I promise you not too long, alright? So come with me to, I'm thinking. But so far, I want you to understand that Paul said that, says I'm not ashamed of the gospel, blah, 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 we've, we've gone there. Now look at, look at what, look at what verse seventeen said, seventeen said, it will bring light into what we've just um dilly-dallyed around a bit. It says, now for therein, the word therein, what does that suggest? Glenn? We have to Glenn, we have Glenn and Glender, okay, Glender. When you say therein, what does that suggest? Say that again?
People are in.
Say, say that again?
People are in.
Pe- people are in. People are in, okay, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll take that. But what the word therein means, in this. Are you with me so far? Says in this, it says for, for therein is the righteousness of God revealed. Are you guys with me so far? Can you see the answer to your question? Can you see? It says therein is the righteousness of God revealed. Now, we talked about salvation, one of the things that salvation does is salvation reawakens your spirit to the righteousness of God. Salvation reawakens your spirit to what? To the righteousness of God. So when a man gets saved, so Paul says in the gospel is the, your, your faith in the gospel is salvation, your belief in the gospel, I'm, I'm coming from the back up now. Your faith or your belief in the gospel unlocks the power that is in salvation. Now, take that and understand that salvation means, according to what he says, he says therein is the righteousness of God revealed. So when you receive salvation, you reawaken the righteousness of God. Now Paul goes into says it's revealed from faith to faith. As it is written, the just shall live by faith. That is where, this is where I'm going to tonight. Says, the just shall live, live by faith. Say with me, the just shall live by what? One more time, the just shall what? By what? One more time, the what? Who? Who? Shall do what? By? So one more time, the, I want you to take note of these three words, the shall what? Shall by? Okay, now take this into context, three words, just, live, faith. Just, live, faith. I'm getting it right, right? Just, live, faith. So Paul, now you must, you, let, let's, 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 let's take, let's take this back. Everything Paul has been saying thus far has come to this scripture. Now what is interesting about this scripture, it is mentioned about four times in scripture. I remember when in Jesus' name, but one of the first time it's mentioned is in the Old Testament. This is when Habakkuk was speaking, stay with me. Habakkuk was speaking and the Bible says that he stood upon his watch and blah, 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 he began to prophesy and began to say all that he could say. But he comes to chapter two and verse four. Two verse four, and he says, the just. Let's stay there for a bit. Without trying to go too deep, um like I said, I don't know if we're doing the, if we're continuing with the book of Romans, but for the sake of, okay, we are. Okay, so I'm not gonna go to chapter three, because Paul begins to explain what justification, justification and, and sanctification and pure, and, and concentration on the la- later verses of, um, the later chapters of Romans. But for chapter one, he says, he introduces the scripture and says, the just will live by faith. Who is the just? What does the word just mean? Michael, what does the word just mean to you?
The just, I perceive it to mean the righteous ones.
The righteous ones, any other person? Any other person? I'll call your name. Say that again?
Doesn't, doesn't it mean us, like us people?
Oh, people, um. The just, it, there are people who are not just. Now, this is what just means in simple English. Um, anyone's got dictionary dot com? Anybody? Quickly, every, that, that, trust me, that's an app every human should have. It's, it's beautiful, it's the best app ever, go on, just.
Guided by truth, reason, justice and fairness, we hope to be just in our understanding of such difficult situations.
Read it again.
Guided by truth, reason, justice and fairness, done or made according to principle.
Done or made according to principle, I love that definition. Now, the, hold on once again, the meaning of the word just, one of the definitions, right, I can't remember the, the name, but it's one of them um derivatives of the word righteousness. So what the word just means, it means someone who is without fault. Does that make sense? Bless you, Anne, did you hear what I just said? The word just means someone who is without fault. And without fault by what precepts? By law. So you have a case before court and the court finds you not guilty. Therefore you are what? Justified. But Habakkuk before Christ says the just, now one of the prophecies, not one of the prophecy, the prophecy of Habakkuk was futuristic. But it says something interesting, it says the just shall live by his faith. I used to think, so I'm opening it up to um your interpretation. Um, this is not what the Bible per se, this is Paul's understanding. Clear? This is Paul's understanding of scripture. It says the just shall live by his faith. Now, I believe strongly that if Habakkuk before Christ was saying that the just shall live by his faith, he was talking about the righteousness that was found in the law. So you survive by the righteousness, by your ability to keep the precepts of the law. For example, you're not going to prison, Glenn, you're not going to prison, Didier. You're not go, nah, Didier, Nadia, you're not going, Diaz, you're not going to prison, why? Because you keep the law. So in the eyes of the law, you are justified. So now you don't need help to actually, um, um, to stay out of, out of prison, because naturally you're fulfilling the law. Now, if you speak, does that make sense? Do you, do you get what I'm saying? Now, now, um. I don't know, it's a personal joke. Um, if, if, sorry, go on, Esther has a question, question? What did I say? Okay, before speed, I was saying that you don't need help or you don't, no one is gonna pull you and take you to prison because you've not committed an offence. So basically, in the eyes of the law, you are just. But if you walk into sheriff and sons and feel like you're a king and help yourself to some bananas and just walk out feeling like a king, if they don't share you right there. Do you, do you understand what I'm saying, Didier, do you understand what I'm saying? So the righteousness, so in the eyes of the law of man, by not doing that, you are found just. So what does this mean? I'm trying to unlock something, I'm gonna, now please, as I'm speaking, write down your questions, because I'm gonna, I'm actually gonna open the floor for questions. Right, okay, so the righteousness that comes from this, so in being just, it means my mind and my actions is guided by something. There is a law that I am adhering to. By being just, oh slop, by being just, it means that there is a law that I am working with in my mind. So that law in my mind is what guides me. So for example, if, um, if I someone help me with something that, that offends the law, just against the law? Huh? Oh, there we go, so if I, okay, say for example, beautiful, um, Amanda is annoying me so bad. And I just wanna like take a bottle and put it through her. Um, you know, and just say, just end it here. Something is gonna stop me. Let's just, let's assume I'm not a Christian. The fear of prison will stop me from doing that. So I am now conformed to the image of the law. Hence I act out the way I do. Does that make sense? So do you understand what it means to be just? So to be just doesn't just mean right standing or I'm doing what's right. To be just means I am living my life on the basis of a principle, of certain principles. So I can't break the barriers of this principle. So I'm living within the confines of what this bar, of what this, uh, 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 um, this preset, what this law is. Now it says the just shall live. That what they live would suggest both eternal life and existence here on earth. That what live would suggest both eternal life and my existence here on the earth. Have I lost anyone so far? Okay, beautiful, I see you guys are writing, I feel safe. Because then I don't feel like I'm talking over your head, so let me say that one more time. What did I just say? Live means it has, um, you can put it in two dimensions, first, either existence here on earth or eternity. Yeah, that's beautiful. So the just lives, basically his life here on earth is guided, oh, oh, no time to revel in, okay. Sometimes you can't help it, but let's keep it, let's keep it plain, says, make it plain, okay, so. Okay, so he says he'll live by what? By his faith. Habakkuk says by his faith, come to the New Testament. Now remember I said the book of Habakkuk, for those of you who do not know, is in the Old Testament. And everything that happened in the Old Testament was before Jesus. Make sense? Everything that happened in the Old Testament was before Jesus. So the just lived by his, he was, he was there's the word, ticked, oh, what's the word? Not rendered, deemed, called, something, somebody help me out, English students, help me out. He was classified as righteous because he kept the precepts of the laws. Now, but now we have a new law. Remember we've beat this to death here in E K C, how that the law in itself had no ability to save us, blah, blah, blah. We're not going to go into that today. Cool? So now, New Testament, Paul now begins to write, after talking about salvation and the gospel and the power that we unlock when we begin to believe, he says now we grow from faith to faith. Saying the just will live by faith, who makes us just? Therefore who should we live by? Romans says, now this is where I'm gonna close. Somebody time me three minutes, somebody, anybody, time me three minutes. We find justification in Christ. All have sinned. So Paul begins to make us understand that there is the life that comes from living justly and then there are benefits that come from it. So he says the righteous live by faith. What does it mean to live, to exist? It means the righteous conform. The righteous are constrained within the precepts of everything that is found in Christ. Does that make sense so far? So basically no longer is our justification found in our ability to keep the law. But through faith in Jesus, we connect the righteousness of Christ and therefore we are called what? Just. So if you take that scripture, the just shall live by faith, if you take it backwards, it means by faith we live justly. Does that make sense? By faith we live justly. Let me start, let me, let me take a break there. Anyone have any question? Question, question, question? Question, contributions? I wanna, and you guys need to get this. So what? Love, don't be ashamed to ask questions. Please, don't be ashamed, that, that's why we're doing all this.
Can we have a, a short recap on just?
On just?
Being just, please?
Being just means that I'm doing, I'm keeping the law.
That's true.
Does that make sense? Everyone clear? Do you have something? Go on. Okay, Auntie Effie?
Maybe if you look at the word just, eh, in correlation with the word justice? Um, for instance, when say we watch the news and someone had committed murder or something and, um, say they, they've charged them, maybe they interview the family and the family will say, justice has been done. In a way fairness has been done. Yeah, so in this case, if we take it from the context of verse sixteen, we're talking about, um, the power of God unto salvation for everyone that believeth. Yeah, that power we're talking about. And it is therein, that in, inside that power of God is the righteousness of God. And we remember from, I can't remember whether it's chapter five or somewhere where, where they say, we are actually clothed in the righteousness of God. When God looks at us, he sees Christ outside us and that's how he sees us as righteous. But how does it get to that? They just shall live by faith. Yeah, we are justified because of his righteousness. And how did we get that righteousness? Faith comes by hearing, hearing the word of God. That word told us, we are clothed, it's not our righteousness, it's Christ's righteousness. And cause we heard that and we embraced that, that justifies us. I don't know whether that makes it.
Does that make sense to you? Let me round off with this, let me round off like this. Auntie Effie just took finger to the end. No, it's alright, it's fine, it's alright. Um, finger, um. Okay, now practically practically, this is what it means. You know, on those days where there are struggles to actually live the, in quote, Christian life? It is in those days that you begin to understand that in our own strength, by our own ability, we can't, we actually can't live out the righteousness of God. Read your Bible, pray every day. Faith comes by hearing. And you were transformed, you begin to morph into what you hear. But imagine if you're hearing the word of God, the law did not have the power to keep you from sinning. But the word of God, as you read it, it comes with power. Does that make sense? So the word of God comes with power that enables you to live justly or righteously. So practically, how do we walk by faith? So Lord, I acknowledge my weaknesses. Bible says his strength is made perfect where? In our weakness. So when we begin to acknowledge because, because, but the scripture says, I couldn't go into it. Galatians three, verse one, he says, all foolish Galatians, who has bewitched? I think in that chap, in that chapter, I also talked about the just shall live by faith. He said, who has bewitched you? That you would obey not the truth? Said, have you, you started in the spirit, are you not made perfect by the flesh? What does that mean? The source of your righteousness is not from your actions anymore. But the source of your righteousness comes from God himself. Now how does this work practically? When you spend time to meditate on him and on his word, he begins to, uh, um, Joshua one, verse eight, says, this book of the law, you, as you meditate on it, as you chew on it, it's like food for your spirit. So he begins to nourish your spirit and then you begin to live, instead of from the flesh inward, you begin to live from the spirit outwardly. So you begin to find yourself that as you make yourself more aware of what God says, his righteousness begins to be imputed in your spirit. Because as you read, as you meditate, as you, as you come to church, as you pray, as you worship, as you do all these things, something, there is a God DNA that you are activating by doing all this act. So now by doing all that, when now knowledge, faith comes by hearing and hearing by the word of God, not my interpretation of the word, but his interpretation of the word, that's an entirely different topic for another day because scriptures are dividing the truth rightly. There's a wrong way to divide the truth, there's a, there are loads of wrong revelations that sound true. Loads of them. But when you spend time without trying to be all deep, take the word of God, wake up in the morning, read your Bible, say, God, I don't understand this, bring light to it. Try this, if there's ever a scripture that looks like like mathematics to many of you. Just say, Holy Spirit, explain it to me, don't try to understand it in your, I'm, I'm, just say, Holy Spirit, I don't understand this, explain it to me. You will be shocked at the revelation you receive. Now, the just shall live by faith. Remember the revelation that God gives you, he expects you to live it out. That is the, we grow from faith to faith. Questions? I'm done, by the way. Was I three minutes or more? Whatever.
Yeah, um, in terms of faith and believing, I was looking at, um, Hebrews eleven.
Thirty-eight. Oh, which one?
Huh?
Go on.
Um, yeah, Hebrews eleven, and it talks about how faith is a substance of things not seen.
Of things.
Yeah, yeah, that way, and yeah, anyway. Um, my question is can we say that believing equals faith? Can we use the words believe and faith interchangeably or, because, do you know what I'm saying?
You can.
You can. So it's the same thing, oh, I believe, oh, I have faith.
Okay, this is where bishops come, come please, bishops, please come stand beside me so I don't, I don't take my time. Believe, right? Believe comes from what you've seen, sometimes, sometimes, sometimes. But faith often is some, you have faith in something you don't see. So how do you, you believe I'm standing here, right? Because why? You can see me. Because you can see me. But if I'm not here, if the light is off, you need faith to believe that I'm here. That's the only distinction. That is the only distinctions and yes, you can use them interchangeably. Does that make sense? Answers your question? Any other question? Okay.
Just rounded out what I wanted to say.
Oh, I'm, I'm done.
Wow. Yeah, you, you can use them interchangeably. Because as we know that faith, you know, is the, is the, the currency that is needed in heaven. But when we're talking about believing, I believe it's more than faith. Look at Paul, after what happened to Paul on the road to Damascus, he believed at a higher level because of what God had done on, on, on that road of Damascus. So now when we get to that point, I, this is why I use the word believe because it's, to me, it's more stronger than just to have faith. I don't know if it's making sense to anyone. But it's more like you've got, you, you've got that personal relationship with God and no one can take you away from that. That's why the Bible says, you know, even Hebrews, if you can't go to God unless you believe, unless you know he's, he exists. Now, we are talking about believing God fully, not, not part, fully. So I believe, yeah, you can use them either way. As long as, you know, it's, it's connected, you know, it's connected to our yeah, you can use it interchangeably. I believe so as well.
Okay, everyone, because I love Tustin very much, but I don't wanna be, do something favorable. If you have a question, write it down now and we're gonna start with your questions next week. Amen. Pastor Paul, hang here before we go. So who enjoyed today's biblical meditation and study? Wasn't Pastor Paul, yes, please, please put down here, sir. Wasn't Pastor Paul excellent today, everyone? Okay. Blessed. Amen. Um, before I actually, let me do this first and then I'll go on to what I was going to do. Thank you, sir. Bless you, Tustin, if you can just. Who prepared today by reading verse thirteen and fourteen of Romans, chapter one, as we said last week, hands up? Hands up high, don't just. Okay, one, two. Now, you read, whether you read it today, whether you read it last week, whether you read it every single day, whether you've read it in, in your lifetime, who, who prepared from last week? It's not whether, oh, I read it like last year or two weeks ago. Okay, now, without trying to make it like homework, we are purposefully doing this on Thursdays because we want us to renew our minds. Amen? Somebody say, I will renew my mind. This, the beauty of what Jesus Christ had with the disciples is that they saw, he saw them every day. So he knew how much of Romans, chapter one, verse one was in Peter. He knew how much of Genesis, chapter one, verse twenty-five was in, I was about to say Paul, it was in John. Amen? I want to know how much of this is in you. Because some people are not coming to see me, some people I'm, I'm not seeing every day and it is my duty as the shepherd, as your brother in Christ. Someone's going, yes, I'm your brother in Christ first of all. Before being your leader, before being your pastor, first of all, I'm your brother in Christ. And it is my duty to make sure that iron sharpens iron. And this is how we do it, by getting into the mind of God. So please, when we say whoever leads biblical meditation or is moderating and the moderator can, can come in as well, please prepare. It is for your benefit. Amen? It's not only just by just coming here and putting hands up in worship and just, woo, great! And then preach, preach, oh, yeah, good! And then you go home and then you're wondering why some things are not improving in your life. No, it's because you're not getting into this. And the truth of the matter is, I don't need God to give me an open vision to show me that some people are not reading the Bible. It is clear. Okay? So that's why we're calling it not just study, but biblical meditation. So please, read these verses, go back home and go over them again and again and fall in love like Pastor Paul said when he started. Getting in God's presence, nothing beats it. I kinda got in trouble today, so I'm gonna confess, I cancelled my TV licence without telling my wife today. I was just in a, I was just in one of those, uh, kinda moods and I was like, no, leave it all away, giving it all. So we'll see if TV comes back. Don't worry, my house is not boring, anyone can tell who's come to my house, we hardly watch TV, so if you come to my house, there will be something to do. But anyway, I said all of that to say this, please, please, Auntie Effie will tell you, Pastor Sam will tell you, Mariam's not here. They will tell you, this Bible, anyone who's ever read a verse, and you will definitely tell me, there's been a time you've read it and you just thought, wow, there's something about that. Imagine if you're doing that every day, you can have a wow every day. Amen? So I encourage you, read this Bible, okay? So I'm not gonna ask us what we got from thirteen and fourteen because we discussed it, but please make sure you do so. So where did we stop, sir?
Verse eighteen, but I couldn't get into finger.
Okay, verse eighteen, we'll see.
We start eighteen next week.
We start eighteen next week, so we'll see who will be next week. Might be me, might be Pastor Paul, might be Pastor Sam, might be Auntie Effie, so we'll see. So we know the only, the four people who I think it could be, so we'll see if God says it's someone else. Amen? Amen, God bless you.
This message has been brought to you freely by Ecclesia Kingdom Movement. To support our ministry and partner with us to increase our impact across the world, reach more people and take advantage of more platforms, we encourage you to consider making a monthly gift of any amount or one-time gift towards the work of the gospel. We'd like to thank you in advance for your support and we value your partnership.